Good evening, everyone. Dr. Rivera, will you please read us a prayer?
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day of life you've given us today and blessings that we've gotten so far in our lives and for those blessings that you have in store for us the rest of our lives. Most of all, we thank you for that unconditional love you have for us. We ask you to continue to bless us, bless this institution, students, our taxpayers, and to be with us tonight as we make decisions that will be of benefit to our institution and to our faculty, staff, and students as well as our taxpayers. We ask this need to stretch name. Amen.
Amen.
The meeting of the board of trustees, what's our question, if you may, if I would please come to order. Dr. Rivera, will you please read the minutes of the October 2021 board meeting, please, sir?
Yes, sir. This one? The Board of Trustees, I was taking junior college, met in regular session October 21st, 2021, in the Methodist Student Center Blue Bonnet Room. Board President Roethlisberger, who our Florida is called the meeting to order at 7:05 PM. Board members present were Roethlisberger, President, Dr. Harry Watkins, Vice President, Dr. Antonio H. Rivera, Secretary, Medina Alada, Tony T. Moreno, and Anita Shackelford. Board member absent was Victor Lopez. Also present was Dr. Hector Gonzalez, President of the College. The minutes of the September 19, 2021 regular board meeting were read and approved as presented by Dr. Antonio Rivera. Board President Flores welcomed guests at the meeting, which included college personnel, Ann Starsky, Derek Sandoval, Mark Underwood, Wade Carpenter, Ismael Martinez, Sarah Morales, Mrs. Shackelford, Miss Shackelford's sister, Ann, Melissa Petersfield from the Valley Leader News, Audit to Patent for None, Quarterly Investment Report presented by Ann Starsky, 2021 End of the Year Board Report presented by Dr. Hector Gonzalez, and the Title IX Report was presented by Dr. Hector Gonzalez. The President's Report was presented by Dr. Hector Gonzalez. The motion was made by Anita Shackelford and seconded by Maria Elena Alada to approve the September 30th, 2021 financial statement as presented by Ann Starsky. The motion carried unanimously and the copy is attached. A motion was made by Tony T. Moreno and seconded by Dr. Harry Watkins to approve the Del Rio Hanger lease. Motion carried unanimously. A copy is attached. A motion was made by Dr. Harry Watkins and seconded by Tony T. Moreno to reschedule the December board meeting to Thursday, December the 9th, 2021. The motion carried. A copy is attached. Board President Flores called the board into executive session at 7:41 PM to consider, A, employees terminated, resigned, retired, new hires, and transfers under the Texas Code Number 551.074. At 8:25 PM, the Self-Expatriation College Board reconvened in regular session. With no further businesses or business or action items to address, to discuss, Anita Shackelford made the motion to adjourn, and Dr. Harry Watkins seconded the motion, and the motion carried at 8:26 PM.
There are corrections, additions to the minutes. If not, they will stand approved as read. We're glad to have with us our guests, Ismael Martinez, Wade Carpenter, Derek Sandoval, Marv, Melissa Petersfield. Thank you for being with us. Do we have any audits or patents?
No, sir.
President's Report, please.
Yes, item number five in your board packet. First item, COVID-19. As you're aware, the cases continue to trend downward. We're, if you look at the CDC Community Transmission Tool that we're using, we're either, where we have campuses, we're either in the green or in the yellow, and the plan is max mask are recommended but not required, not enforced. So, we made that transition on Monday. Not any fanfare, just changed our signage, and we've had, you know, people continue wearing masks, people opting not to wear masks, so it's really up to each individual at this point. Our plans are to have, to shoot for a normal spring semester. We've released the social distancing holds on classrooms. You know, we were holding them to have six feet spacing, so we did away with that for the spring and trying to get our students back on campus. We do still have Zoom options open for the students, those that are, you know, are still requesting and asking for a Zoom classroom. So, that's kind of where we're headed with COVID-19. We're trying to get back to, to normal, you know, provided the cases continue to follow the way they're doing. We have, as you know, the air purifiers in every room. We have the temperature screens. We've had multiple vaccination opportunities on campus, the mask. We feel going forward that, you know, even reducing the social distancing with all the protocols that we have in place, I think we should be able to continue in that form going forward. Under partnerships, we continue to work with Union Pacific on, specifically on the Diesel Program Expansion. I visited with Ivan Heime with Walmart Foundation about possible expansion funding for expansion in our technical programs. We're going to get back together after the first of the year and see if we can't put something together through Walmart Foundation.
Dr. Antonio, what kind of technical programs are we talking about there?
We're talking about expanding our footprint to Eagle Pass, Del Rio, and Valde to have more robust. So, like the Good Jobs Challenge, the next one, we're looking at physical therapy assistance. We're looking to medical lab assistants. We're looking for heavy equipment, power line tech, expanding to Del Rio. So, those programs. We've already have a grant to fund the cybersecurity and surgical tech. So, that's in progress right now. That's a grant that we already got funded for. This is a bigger grant, and it would, you know, those would be additional programs, but also perhaps expanding some programs that we only have here, like, for example, Diesel, maybe bring in Diesel to Valde along with Eagle Pass. So, that's kind of what the third bullet is, the EDA Challenge. Did a presentation to the Workforce Board and the Middle Rio Grand Board on the college priorities and what we have planned going forward. And then finally there, on November 2nd, we're notified that we were, you know, the top 10% of the nation for community colleges. There's 150 colleges that were, that are eligible to apply for the Aspen Prize, and our teams are working on that. As we speak, the application is due in December. And then upcoming meetings, or upcoming events, events and meetings, we had a Thanksgiving Luncheon for staff, students, and we invited first responders. We held it outdoors. That was Tuesday?
Tuesday?
Wednesday, yesterday. Of course, November meeting Legislative, Turkey Trot is Saturday. Will be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday, the 24th through 26th. Our Christmas at the College lighting will happen on November 30th. Community College Commission, that's a meeting that I attend on the first. We're going to have a Christmas luncheon, again outdoors. We'll do service pins that we haven't been able to award for two years. We'll be distributing those at the Christmas luncheon. And then, of course, we have our December board meeting and have a legislative committee meeting on the 14th there, and then we'll break for the holidays on the 15th, and then the offices will reopen on the 3rd. And I went ahead and put the board meetings there for 2020 through, 2022 through commencement.
Thank you. Next item is considering act on the financial statements of October 31, 2021.
Yes, sir. I'll do those. Item number six in your board pack. Page 13 there, our total current funds cash in the bank, $3.5 million. Certificates of deposit, $5.7 million for a total current funds of $9.3 million. Turning to page 15, our total other funds, cash in the bank, $813,000. Certificates of deposit, $7 million for a total of $7.9 million. When you look at current funds and other funds together, we have total cash in the bank, $4.4 million. Total certificates of deposit of $12.8 million for a total cash and certificates of deposit of $17.2 million. Page 16 lists our, our investment in CDs, their by term, interest rate, maturity date, and nomination. Page number 19 is those CDs that matured and those that were renewed. And page number 20 is our scholarship balances. We have a total of $953,000 in scholarships. Page 21 is our other investments. The Wilsey Miller is valued at $258,000, and our corporate plant stock, $165,000. And page 22 just says that we're in compliance with our investment report, investment compliance.
Any questions or comments?
I'll go ahead and approve it, just presenting. I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Is there a second?
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. I think we're in pretty good shape.
Mm-hmm.
We're in good shape.
Better than.
Okay, next item is considering act on resolution to cast votes for individuals to serve on the Director's of the Valley County Appreciation District Board.
Yes, sir. So, that's item number seven in your board pack. We have a total of 216 votes allocated to the college, and we have three nominees to allocate the votes to, Jalen Carnes, Howard Kingsbury, and Tony T. Moreno.
Let's see, we allocate them to Mr. Moreno.
If we, if you all want to divide them up, that's fine, too. I mean, that's.
We make a motion, we give, we assign the 216 to Tony.
Next item.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Next item is considering act on resolution to cast votes for individuals to serve as the Director's of the Valley County Appreciation District.
Yes, sir. Mr. Flores, I spoke to Nita, and she, her recommendation is to allocate 205 to Sparks and 204 to Hampton, if a board member would like to make that motion, but that.
Who's that, Dr. Antonio?
Ms. Shackelford. Oh, oh, 205 to Sparks, number three, and 204 to Hampton, number four.
Do we have a motion?
So, ready?
There's a second.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Next item is considering act on resolution to cast votes for individuals to serve as the Director's of the South Valley County Appreciation District Board.
I would like to make a recommendation. Give some of our votes to Jesse Gonzalez. I've worked with him, and he's one of the commissioners there, so. Whoever else, anybody wants to.
Let's say we also include a Cruz Mata in there. Maybe we can divide it up. What do you think? Tony?
Yeah. Oh, the other Tony.
How, how many would be for Jesse?
175 apiece.
175 apiece.
That would be half.
Good work.
175.
Half of 350.
No motion?
Anybody else you suggest? Dr. Rivera?
I'll make a motion.
Well, I'll, I'll just mention if when, when we get to the, after the, the motion is second, so. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. It is now settled. And the board will convene in closed session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, to consider and for exterminated, resigned, retired, new hires, transfers, Texas Government Code, Section 551.074. We're now in closed session.